You ready, Matt? You guys ready?
Yes, sir.
Good, Jason?
Yeah.
It's 6:30 PM here on July 21st. We're going to call a legislation, codes and regulations meeting to order. Clerk, could you please take your role?
Mr. Neff?
Here.
Mr. T. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Schaubert?
Here.
Looks like we don't have any summaries at this point to act on. We're going to move on to items. The first item of business is ordinance 2025-060.
Ordinance to place on the ballot in November of 2025. The question of choosing a commission to frame a charter for the city of Marion and establishing the requirements for the election of members of the Charter Commission of the city of Marion and declaring emergency.
At this time, I would like to yield the floor to Law Director Russell, who's been critical on getting this back on our agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As a part of the agenda distribution, everyone should have received an ordinance that at the very top you can identify it has post-July 14, 2025 council meeting. This is a document that I've worked with the chairperson Neff to incorporate a lot of the comments that have been shared in the past. And for those that aren't aware, this ordinance was referred back to committee by the last, at the last council meeting. And also, it's probably a good time to note, earlier this year, council modified the council rules that allows for an ordinance that's been referred back to committee to be amended while it's in committee. We got rid of the sentence that caused a great deal of confusion, which used to read, "No ordinance shall be amended in committee." That no longer exists. So, the reason I mention that, this clean version of the ordinance with the revisions that I'll walk through in a minute, is in a condition or is prepared to move forward and back to council once all the questions are addressed, if any. Let me just walk through what has changed in the document itself. In the very title, autocorrect kept making the "and" in the second to last word, "and", and here it's been repaired, so autocorrected and make it an "and" again. This document incorporates the changes that were made at council. We have two amendments that were made are incorporated in the beginning of this. For example, in Section 1, the sentence, "This question shall be followed by the words yes and no," was moved, seconded, and adopted, revised, and incorporated into the ordinance itself. So, the first clean version modification is in the first full paragraph of Section 1, in the second line. It now reads "next general election." The previous reference was the special, now was errant. So, you can see on this clean version, it now refers to "next general election." In Section 3, there have been a number of changes that have been made in Section 3, starting in the second paragraph. You will note that the petition for individual candidates who desire to be members of the commission shall obtain five and no more than 30. That's in the second line of the second paragraph. It goes on to clean up or correct and refers to only one nominating petition. That's Form 3P in the fourth line. It also includes a reference, unless nominated by city council, which shall be done by ordinance. That's an update correction suggested by Attorney Hunter that was previously discussed. To the second to last line, second paragraph, Section 3, that date has been changed to August 11th. That's just to accommodate the matter coming back to council, or back to committee, and then assuming it goes back to council. So, August 11th is a new date as far as when petitions are due to the Board of Elections. Moving on to the third paragraph of Section 3, the second line, the August, the date there has also changed to accommodate the ordinance coming back to committee, and again, assuming it goes back to council, the timelines will still work. In the second line, that August date has been referred to in the documents, August 27th. That section goes on to incorporate what Attorney Hunter had suggested to incorporate, mainly to take into account if there are not 15 successful petitioners to be on the ballot, to be considered for the commission, the council has a vehicle and a manner in which to fill the remaining vacant positions, if there are any, because the commission is required to have 15 members by the Ohio Constitution where this originates from, this authority. If you go down a little further in Section 4, that same statement, "This question shall be followed by words yes and no," that was adopted at Attorney Hunter's recommendation. So, I've walked through all the changes that have been made. The previous versions are available online if anybody desires to review those previous versions. But this, Mr. Chairman, this document in its current form, and actually, it removes any reference to slates. So, there's no reference in this clean version to slates. It's just essentially independent candidates who desire to be on the commission, on the ballot. So, it's in a form. Once all the other questions are addressed, it's ready to move back. I would suggest the committee make a motion, receive a second, and approve these amendments that I just walked through, and send it back as amended to the council, so the council's ready to consider it Monday night. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you, Director Russell. All last week, there was a lot of conversation and getting in touch with Director Russell, and he has been available at any time all through the week, and has helped me out a lot to get this back to where it is tonight. So, thank you, Director Russell, for all your help on this, or we wouldn't be sitting here tonight with this clean version. Just as Director Russell's mentioned, we've taken in the amendments that the public suggested, which the first one would be to eliminate the slate. So, as Director Russell spoke on, that has been removed. We also called for lowering the signatures required for petitions, so that's down to five. Gary Hunter, the main thing that changed in this ordinance with Gary Hunter is basically putting a contingency plan into place if we do not get 15 Charter Commission members certified by the Board of Elections. And then also, Board of Elections, I went and met with them last week. We had a very good conversation to where they understood where I was coming from, and I was, got a better understanding of where they were coming from. So, those changes have also been in here as far as identifying the proper petition that should be filled out, confirming the dates in Section 3 is when the petitions are due, and also tentatively understand that the Board of Elections, Executive Board will be meeting on August 13th to potentially certify petitions if we go that route. I just want to again thank Mark Russell for helping me get this back to this point. Thank you for Clerk Pollock as well this week being available, and specifically Cindy Price and Brian Blair, the Director and Deputy Director at the Board of Elections, for taking the time to meet with me last week. So, right now, I'll turn it back over to the committee. Counselor Schaubert, go right ahead.
So, August 11th is the filing deadline for petitions.
Correct.
The Board of Elections think that they can certify however many signatures in two days, and then turn around and certify these petitions on the 13th?
They're agreeable, but once again, I cannot and will not speak for the Board of Elections. They're not here this evening, so I cannot and will not speak for them. I think their heartburn over the whole situation would be if the city were to turn in 200 petitions with 30 signatures on it, then that would be heartburn and overtime for the Board of Elections.
Right. There was mention for a petition to be used that committee members use. Is that not a viable option? Or, Mr. Russell standing up? I see that corner of my eye. Because that would cut down their labor on verifying signatures.
The Constitution language, we aren't going to be able to go with a nominating, I forget what it was referred to. But the Constitution's clear that the elections shall be as if it was a ward race. It doesn't use those words, but the elections shall be similar to how a council member becomes elected for a ward, and so that's why the petition is required.
Okay.
Counselor Smith?
I just think all the amendments are great. I think we need to get this in front of the people as quickly as possible, let the people decide whether or not a charter is something that Marion needs or not. So, I mean, I would definitely turn it over to the public after the committee and see what everyone else has to say first, otherwise I would make a motion.
Okay, I think we're going to go some comments first, though. Anything from the administration at this point? I saw Mr. Barr up here, and then we'll go to Ms. Lookie.
Mr. Barr, first word, City Council. I know you had conversations with the Board of Elections. Have they seen the amendments to this, and if they're already okay to them? And same with Mr. Hunter, has he seen the amendments we did?
It was emailed to everybody Friday.
Okay. So, we got their stamp of approval on?
I'm not going to say we've got their stamp of approval. I cannot, will not speak for the Board of Elections.
Well, they're not here to object, so I just want to make sure they have seen it.
They have seen it, yes. I had an hour-long meeting with them last Tuesday, and we went over, honestly, that's where we got some of the dates to try and hash that out, but that's where we're at with the Board of Elections. Okay.
If I may, I also think it's important to point out, this is completely free for us to put on the ballot, so whether it...
Correct? Yes.
So, whether it passes or fails at the ballot, we're really not invested in this and with any money. So, that's an important thing to point out at this point, I feel like.
It's extremely low risk. Ms. Lookie.
3365 Silver Street. Normandy Drive. Just to follow up on what Mr. Barr was asking, I want to ask specifically in Section 3, where it says nominating petitions will be filed no later than 4:00 PM on August 11th. You specifically cleared that because the calendar with the Board of Elections says that nonpartisan petitions have to be filed on August 6th.
Correct.
So, they are okay with changing that deadline from the state calendar of elections?
This charter question and these commission members do not, in my opinion, do not fall beneath that 90-day filing deadline that you're talking about. We, I have had discussions with them, and I cannot speak for the Board of Elections.
Okay.
They are aware of the August 11th date.
Okay. And they didn't object?
I can't speak for the Board of Elections. I'm sorry, I just can't, so if I got anything that was made clear.
But when you had a meeting with them, did they say, "We can't do that date, it has to be the 6th"?
They did not say that, no.
Okay. Did they say August 11th at 4:00 PM is okay?
I can't, I can't speak for them.
Are we going to be in the same position we were a week ago, where they come on Monday to City Council and then have questions and don't understand and object to that deadline because it's different than what's in the calendar?
If I may, Mr. Chairperson?
Please.
So, again, this election is provided for in our state constitution, and it references the 61-20 day window. So, what you're seeing is you have that authority that's in the Constitution, and then you have your election code sections, the election and the ORC. And so, that's the difference. And while it may be an issue later, if it was to be resolved by court, it would be resolved in our favor because of the Constitution authority, so.
Mr. Chair.
Counselor Schaubert.
From my conversations that I had with them, they really want to hold fast to the August 6th date or whatever date that is, but they have to follow whatever ordinance council sends over to them. And, but what they're really going to have a problem with, and they keep reiterating it to me, that if they have a bunch of petitions turned in and gives them a day and a half or two days to certify, well, actually, it'd be a day because the 11th is the deadline, then you have 12 to certify at least 15 petitions. They would probably have to pay for overtime, and who's paying for that? That's their biggest argument that they have, and I kind of got the feeling that if it comes to overtime, they have the option to bill us.
Naomi Craig, 365 Silver Street. So, to say this is absolutely 100% free is not accurate. The Board of Elections has the option to send us a bill should they encounter overtime.
That's my understanding from my conversations that I had.
That was, I had the conversation with Cindy Price, too, and that was my understanding, but I'm not an elected official, so I didn't think that anyone would believe me.
Any other comments? Once again, I fully expect us to send this back to council with the amendments being made and send that back tonight, and I fully expect the question to be resolved on July 28th.
Mr. Chair.
We will be suspending the rules, and we will be going forward on the 28th. So, council will have that decision to make on July 28th. We've had the three readings, and now we're back.
Naomi Craig, 365 Silver Street. You haven't had three readings, you've had two readings. And how can you say that the rules are going to be suspended when the people haven't been heard about yet?
We've had the three readings. We've already had the three readings.
Next week would be the third reading, because it says right in the agenda, second, two readings.
We've already had three readings.
Then why are we having a fourth reading?
Because we were sent back to committee. Any other questions?
So, then wouldn't that make it a new piece of legislation if it had been read three times and it comes back to committee?
The Law Director explained everything the way it's supposed to be.
So, I'm not allowed to ask any more questions?
You can ask any questions you like at this point, sure.
Okay. So, will I get an answer? Mr. Schaubert, looks like he has an answer.
I don't know if I have answers, but I could probably muddy the waters. Maybe the chairperson misspoke. If it is truly, in fact, the third reading, there would be no need to suspend rules.
We had the third reading last Monday night. It was sent back to committee.
So, wouldn't that make this a new piece of legislation if we've already had three readings?
Yes, it will be on the first read on July 28th.
So, you're guaranteeing the rules?
I fully expect the council to suspend the rules.
You're guaranteeing that the council is going to suspend rules? So, if you had conversation with other council members about them suspending rules, that that would be a violation of sunshine laws?
I can speak to any single council member. I'm going to defer to the law director.
Mr., it's important to clarify at that point you tried to make. Mr. Neff having conversations with another council person?
One at a time is fine.
He can have conversations with council persons.
Not more than one?
Doesn't violate the sunshine law.
Not more than one at a time.
Okay, I'm not going to argue with you. I'm just making the point that your statement was false.
Okay.
That Mr. Neff and other council members can talk with other council members. That's a part of the legislative process, and it doesn't violate the sunshine law.
Is this something we're willing to let?
Mr. Neff is correct that when it goes back, if it goes back from committee...
Would it be the first reading or the fourth reading?
It'll be the first reading because it's been amended.
Okay, and then we would need to suspend the rules, which is what he guaranteed would happen.
I didn't guarantee any.
You said, "I fully expect for us to suspend the rules."
That's right. That's not a guarantee.
So, then you have it already taken back?
I've sat up here long enough to know that there's no guarantee.
You're moving away. Why is this such a big deal to you?
Because I'm invested in this community.
Okay.
Any other input at this point? Wishes of the committee, Counselor Schaubert?
Yeah, I was, before you said that you expected it to be suspended, I was ready to send this out of committee in the hopes that we would have Monday's meeting and then schedule two special meetings, just to give full three readings, but I don't know if I like the idea of dropping it Monday and rolling with it.
Mr. Chairman?
Director Russell.
I don't know what meeting this is, the sixth, seventh, or eighth meeting that we've talked about this subject matter, probably into double digits. There's nothing on this proposed document for the committee's action tonight that is new, that is different than has been discussed at the last almost double-digit meetings. So, obviously, it's council's prerogative on how it acts Monday night, but the content has been discussed many times.
The simple question is, does council want to give the voters the opportunity to write a charter? It's a five-word question. It's basic of all questions. Does this council want to give the voters of Marion the opportunity to write their own charter? Wishes of the committee? Counselor Smith?
Mr. Law Director, does the amendment for this need to be made separate from the motion to send on to council?
I would suggest that there be a motion to amend to incorporate those changes that I expressed earlier this evening, to move, to incorporate those amendments in as a separate motion.
Okay.
And you can do it all as one because it's all in front of you.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to amend ordinance number 2025-60 to what we have in front of us, if that's correct.
Yes, I will second that motion. Clerk, could you please take your role?
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Item number two. We have a liquor transfer request.
He made a motion to amend not to send it to council.
Okay.
I will make a motion to send this on to council.
I will second that motion. Clerk, could you please take your role?
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
No.
That motion passes two to one.
Was there a recommendation? That's why I voted no, because it didn't hear a recommendation.
I'm assuming since there wasn't one mentioned, it was without a recommendation.
The recommendation to approve is what I meant to say.
I will second that motion. Should we revoke? Are we going to revoke? We're done. Okay. Thank you, sir. New business, item number two. We have a liquor transfer request. This is a transfer of a liquor license from one owner to another. It is a C-2 and a C-1, 450 Jefferson Street, formerly doing business as General Sales. It's going to be doing business at 450 Jefferson Street. Do you have any input from police or fire departments?
We know of no reason to object.
Counselor Smith?
Chief, is, do you know, is this the same place that just made like news last year for having the illegally, illegal gambling operation going on in it?
It is the same location. The new owners were not connected.
Okay, new ownership.
So, we're going to change the transfer ownership.
Wishes of the committee?
I will make the motion that we take no action.
I will second that motion. Clerk, could you please take your role?
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mr. T. Smith?
No.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
Moving on to matters not on the agenda, anything that this committee wishes to bring before?
Yes, and I will be very brief because I don't even know if this committee can do anything about it, but it's legislation codes, regulations for state, federal, and who knows what else? What can we do about the westernmost set of tracks on Sinner Street through ordinance or whatever to get them to fix that? Because I've received multiple complaints of damaged vehicles going over that.
The ones over at Whirlpool?
Yes. Yes.
I just wanted a location in my brain.
Because the eastern...
You mean the ones by...
Yeah, there's two sets of tracks there.
Yeah.
Yeah, the eastern set had been replaced two years ago, maybe, and the westernmost set has been promised to be repaired for four years now. And someone patched some of them. Now, we had the railroad commission here and for another situation, but that crossing came up, and they said they could look into it. Have we heard anything back from them?
I have not heard anything back from them. I know that they said the best option for the public is to click on that link, like on our website, to report a crossing.
On the city's website?
Yeah.
Okay.
And reporting a crossing, if they get enough complaints, that's how they gauge. You would think that we'd have a little say in the matter, saying, hey, this crossing has been like this for a couple of years now, and that they haven't came to fix it yet. But we'll reach out to them again. I'll have the engineer's office reach out and see if there's anything we can get them to do, but this has been going on for a while.
So, we, at one point, we would get notifications promising they would show up for work and I, to do work on the crossing, and then we got notifications saying, well, a crew's stuck in, I think it was Blacklick or somewhere else, or North Baltimore, and that got postponed again. So, are we receiving any notification, any contact with them whatsoever?
I never have.
You've never received anything?
No.
Do we have, do you have a contact list?
I don't have a great contact. Like, I'll find one that I can reach out to.
I will dig through some of my old emails if I can get back far enough, because I was, back when Bischoff was here, he forwarded me a few emails from them. Maybe I can snag a contact and get some answers, because this has gone on long enough. And it's really disturbing and off-putting that the railroad commission stood at that podium and said they would check on it, and that's their primary function as a rail commission, is railroad crossing and safety, and they've not responded.
Here, I'll consult more. That's a CSX track, right?
Yes, sir.
Get you the contact information tomorrow.
Any other matters not on the agenda?
Naomi Craig, 365 Silver Street. I want to make it known to all the world that my son will be mowing tomorrow on West Lawn, and it's worked out to where neither one of the residents are supposed to be home, so I don't expect any call from the police department. Thanks.
Any other matters not on the agenda? Seeing none. Or adjourned? 656.
Call finance, the order 658. Clerk, take your role, please.
Ms. Lang?
Here.
Mr. Rollins?
Present.
Mr. Ratliff. Mr. Ratliff said he was unable to be here this evening.
Proceedings, there's no minutes. I think that's due to you being on vacation.
I was at a conference.
At a conference, so we'll have those next meeting. Old business audits, 20, 21, 22, 23. Ms. McGinnis, do you have an update for us, please?
Documents for 22 have been continued to be submitted. 21, I got an email from the auditor's office today about updating the contacts for the e-services. Once the audit report goes out, I have to update them to make sure that all of council is included on that list. So, that will be getting done tomorrow.
That's through who?
Through the Auditor of State's website. There is a list of contacts that are recipients for the auditor's report once it comes out. I just have to update that report.
Okay, thank you. Not seen on 23, then?
No.
Moving on to item number two, penalties and appeals. I did see that we got an email that the spreadsheet was updated. That was at 5:45 this afternoon. I have not really had an opportunity to look over it, so do you want to give us an update on that, please?
I did include all of 2025's notices on that updated spreadsheet. As I was going through, after I sent it, I realized that I didn't have any...
So I'm going back through to verify that I've updated those correctly. And if I've missed anything, I'll add it, but you'll get a complete updated copy this week.
I may not have printed out 2020.
Gotcha.
21, 22, 23.
Was there one for 2020 as well?
Yeah.
Yes.
I don't think I got it printed out. That's my bad.
So we're missing 2020?
Yeah. I'll get those copied for you.
Thank you.
So status on the appeals or anything? Was there any notices for where the status of appeal, appeals are?
No, the last few notices I've gotten have just been that they need additional time.
And you're going to try to update that and get that to the clerk tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Is there any, do you have any questions? Moving on to new business?
Uh, I have a question. Hold on. Hey, we trade 365 Sinner Street. I've had the occasion to listen to a lot of meetings here lately, and we have not discussed the status of the police and fire pension fund claim. More we have, we discussed, discussed the status of the IRS claim in months, months and months. So is there, are there any updates on those things, or are we just, should we take them off the agenda? Um, because we don't discuss them anymore.
Madam Chairperson, if it's reference to police and fire pension fund, which I heard, and then the following line, the claim against the bond, I actually did send an email to Sam at Auto Owners last Tuesday, asking him for an update so I could provide an update here. I haven't received a response, so I'll probably be giving him a call. But if you remember, we were waiting on Auto Owners Chicago office to give Sam some direction.
It's, it, we've been, we've not talked about it much, so I honestly don't remember Chicago and Sam, but I've, I've been listening to meetings back to last year, and we haven't discussed it since fall, so.
Any other questions? Moving on to new business, item number three, finance 38, paving with Marion Township.
Ordinance making an appropriation within the SCMR fund to complete additional paving within the city of Marion for the year ending December 31st, 2025.
Okay, this is coming from Ms. Courtwright.
This is $9,000 to help with some paving work that we did over in Marion Township. They're working on a section of theirs and it met with the city, so can you clarify?
Yeah, just to continue, it's a couple, couple streets where Marion, the road, the art, the city line crosses a road and you want to continue paving to the, to finish out the roads, it doesn't stop on the road, essentially, you know, on two streets.
I can't remember the name of the...
I think it's one, Merkle, I think.
Yeah, Merkle is one.
I'm not sure if you have one.
But Scott gave us that, and they were just completing that work, and we did cut that budget significantly out of the street, so I thought that was a good deal, just finish that piece for $9,000, let Marion Township do their piece, and that way we didn't have to go back and do it later and pay probably additional, more than $9,000, I'm sure. The reason the New World bounces zero is because the amount for resourcing is already encumbered for the previous $755,000 for this year.
Okay. Given questions?
No questions.
Make a motion to send it on to council with recommendation to approve?
Second.
Clerk, take roll.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Moving on to item number four, finance 39, county land bank demo.
Ordinance making adjustment to appropriations for demos in the general fund for the year ending December 31st, 2025.
And this was also by Ms. Courtwright?
Um, this is funds that we received from the county from the land bank. We've been kind of partnering on a few of the properties, so part of the funds came back to us that they spent, so those dollars went back into the general fund, and we're just asking for those to be appropriated so it can continue using demos and blade houses.
Any questions?
Motion to send on to council with a recommendation to approve?
I'll second. Clerk, take roll.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Moving on to item number four, finance 39, county land bank demo.
Ordinance making adjustment to appropriations for demos in the general fund for the year ending December 31st, 2025.
And this was also by Ms. Courtwright?
Um, this is funds that we received from the county from the land bank. We've been kind of partnering on a few of the properties, so part of the funds came back to us that they spent, so those dollars went back into the general fund, and we're just asking for those to be appropriated so it can continue using demos and blade houses.
Any questions?
Motion to send on to council with a recommendation to approve?
I'll second. Clerk, take roll.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Moving on to item number five, finance 40, workforce mobility grant. Clerk, please.
Ordinance making adjustment to appropriations for workforce mobility grant for the year ending December 31st, 2025.
Okay, this is Ms. Torino.
That's where I got it, but I don't like...
This is your first.
I thought it said Trina, that's why I got...
Oh. It, it says Torino.
It does.
So, either one can speak.
Yeah. Um, this is money we applied for last year and accepted for the workforce mobility grant, um, but we were unsure of the amount that we were going to receive at that time. So now that we know the amount, we wanted to appropriate the monies.
So the grant was for $65,000 that we received?
Um, so one together. But this is the, the federal share. This is...
The $40,000 is the federal share, and then the $25,000 is local share.
Okay.
This is minus the bus.
Yeah, Madam, Madam Chair, we didn't, um, when, when we applied for the funds, we didn't know how the reimbursement piece would work, and we now have determined it's federal money. They will ask us to pay for the 100%, and then, then we reimburse us the 80%, which is the technology and supplies, and then the bus is the $25,000. We only have to pay the 20%.
Okay.
They'll pay the other 80,000 of the bus, $25,000.
So that was a match, then?
That was a match.
Okay.
I'm sorry, can you run that by me one more time because you lost me?
Oh, I'll see, I'm so good in here. The capital, the $25,000 is for the bus. So when we buy buses and we do the local match, they only ask us to send the 20%, they don't ask us to pay the 100% and then send us back. It was an 80/20 match.
Yep.
So we only had to pay the 20%. We'll send that directly to ODOT, to the federal share, and then they'll pay for the rest of the bus on their end. The $40,000 is the 80% federal share that we got awarded. We did not appropriate for that because we didn't know how that they would have us reimburse it. And that's for the radios and technology that we're purchasing out of our mobility grant.
Okay.
We applied for that last year.
Yep.
And that was just to allow us to accept the money.
Gotcha.
This is allowed to us to appropriate it.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I think I got it.
Motion to send on to council with approval?
Second.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Item number six, finance 41, police insurance appropriations.
Ordinance making adjustments to appropriations for insurance payments for the year ending December 31st, 2025.
Okay, and this is also coming from Ms. Courtwright?
We had a cruiser that had, got damaged in an accident, and the insurance payment is what you are appropriating. I had a little bit of money left over in the insurance line, and then we found, we moved money around in our training budget to cover the difference, so we did not increase the appropriation other than for the insurance way that we received as a payment.
So it's the $22,000, is that all insurance? Okay.
And so this will replace a vehicle?
It'll replace a vehicle that was, um, was wrecked.
Okay.
A month or so ago, two months ago.
Motion to send on to council with a recommendation to approve?
Clerk, take roll.
I need a second.
Oh, I need a second, yeah, you need a second. I second it. Take roll, please.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Moving on to matters not on the agenda. We have an ordinance that's being brought forward by transit.
This was, all right, speaking of workforce mobility partnership program grant, um, this is for this next year, and I apologize that it was late getting to you. Zoe and I met on Friday, um, and realized that we had to get this in this week because ODOT gives us five weeks to apply for this, and so this is just, um, the ordinance authorizing us to apply for the workforce grant.
So what is the, the deadline on this is what?
August the 8th.
Do we need that in the ordinance?
That's the submission date.
Oh.
That's the submission date.
Okay.
And it was not in the ordinance last time, the date?
Okay. I'm just...
And this was sent out on Friday, but I don't know if it's been mailed or received.
Okay, is there any questions? So this needs to go to council, what does this?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's possible, just we can approve on them. And with the July 4th holiday, you know, I received this July 1st. I was out the 3rd and 4th, and we couldn't get it to the 7th. I wish they would give us a bit of time, they're going to let it, let us put it out.
When they're going to release it?
Yeah, they don't tell us.
Release date on it, okay.
Motion to send to council with no recommendation.
I'll second that.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Are there any other matters that are not on the agenda? Please state your name and your address, please.
Sam, name is Jason Foreman, on the marywatts.com, resource247.com, investigates.
I need an address.
Uh, 5, uh, 1115 East Church. Tonight, I stand before you to address a matter of grave concern that directly impacts the financial integrity and public trust of our city. For months, our suspicion has been growing, fueled by unsettling inconsistencies in our information technology area, particularly concerning financial data. We now believe our suspicions are confirmed. I recall vividly when Mr. Robert Lannan reached out to me as this situation unfolded regarding the mistaken account numbers and other claims that were going on. Subsequently, when he was issued a finding for recovery by the upper estate. At that time, I was unfortunately inundated with several years of severe family health issues that demanded my full attention. However, once we were able to refocus on these matters in December, it took my team and I no time to realize that something was fundamentally wrong. This sentiment, I believe, has been echoed by the entire team of the current city council at one part or another. A pervasive feeling that, one of my favorites is, something isn't right about the auditor's office issues, we just can't put a finger on it, in various forms. With over 20 years of experience in complex IT systems, including in-depth local deployments to gain PCI compliance, and having consulted with multiple former colleagues whose expertise far exceeds even my own aptitude, I can confirm that we've, what we've uncovered is not just inappropriate, but highly suspicious. What initially piqued our suspicion, one of the things, as this issue re-entered, as we entered public disclosure again back around December after the family health issues, was the apparent mistaken entry and mix-up of federal and state account numbers. As you know, some account numbers have varying formats and lengths, so this caught my attention, threw up a big red flag, so we started digging. The first point is unimpeded administrative access. Through extensive conversations drawing upon the invaluable lessons learned over many years of experience, we were advised by both current and former city leadership that the former deputy auditor Kathy Chafin had unimpeded administrative and/or root access, depending on the operating system, to these and potentially other critical financial and other systems altogether. This level of access without proper oversight or segregation of duties is a highly significant vulnerability. We now firmly believe that this unauthorized access was not only known to certain individuals within the former administration, but regrettably, may also have been known to some within our current administration. It was apparent, however, that these officials didn't fully grasp, some of these officials didn't fully grasp the complexity and ramifications of such administrative access until it was thoroughly explained. I must also inform you that several city government officials have advised that Mayor Collins has taken steps to implement safeguards, reimplement the safeguards, in response to these concerns. While these actions are a necessary step towards securing our systems, they have, in some instances, I'm sure, caused other operational problems. I'm sure you guys can confirm that better than I can. As the city navigates the complexities of tightening security protocols after years of lapsed practice, why this may be highly illegal, IT restricted. Let me briefly explain as much as I can briefly why this situation can be highly illegal, both at the federal and state level. Federally, unauthorized access to government computer systems falls under Computer Fraud and Abuse Act, a serious law designed to protect the integrity of government data and networks. Penalties can range from substantial fines to a significant imprisonment, especially if the access was used to defraud or cause damage. At the state level, under one example, Highway Rules Code, actions like unauthorized use of computers, cable, or telecommunications property, Highway Rules Code 2913.04, if I'm not mistaken, are felonies with penalties escalating based on the value of property or service involved, or the loss to a victim. Furthermore, if this access was used to alter, destroy, or falsify records within the system, it could constitute, among other things, tampering with records, ORC 292112, another felony. Most people we have spoken to regarding this believe this may have been done maliciously, has been stated several times. This belief is amplified by the widespread knowledge that this former deputy auditor would allegedly require employees' usernames and passwords. This practice is highly unethical, if not outright illegal. Requiring employees to hand over their logging credentials bypass critical security controls and audit trails essentially giving an individual unchecked access to manipulate or view data under another employee's identity. This compromises accountability, opens the door to fraud, and can violate various privacy and computer access laws, as personal use of work systems might be implicated. It is critical to state unequivocally that we firmly believe the auditor of state, Mayor Collins, was not aware of this unauthorized, unauthorized administrative access. Their ongoing engagement with our city's financial procedures underscores their commitment to rectifying our issues, and this discovery is a critical piece of the puzzle. We believe the committee, the mayor, law enforcement perhaps, unless now act decisively, we must ensure a thorough investigation into the full scope of this unauthorized access, identify all individuals involved, and implement robust safeguards to prevent such breaches from ever occurring again. Our city's financial stability and the trust of our citizens depends on our unwavering commitment to accountability and transparency. Thank you.
Can we ask some questions, please?
Yes.
How did you come about this information?
It took us a long time. We exited, as I like to call them. We've been doing this a long time, here, things here and there, and we had been digging on the former auditor, or when Robert was running, and we released pieces on that, and it was a mess. When that happened to him, of course, I was inundated. When we got back in, I started contacting old officials, newer officials. I'm not familiar with this administration, don't think I would like to, by the way, I haven't fully got it yet. Just a lot of government people, mostly, coming to us and telling us, they finally gave us a name. We've been waiting on the name, and it's been corroborated across the board.
And you have receipts to go with all this?
I mean, the information that is in some of our articles is pretty compelling. There's certain safeguards that are put into place, like format, like the easiest way to explain it, you go on, say eBay or something, you buy something, you try to push your card number in, and it's not the right amount of digits or something, it won't let you do it. These systems are built with those safeguards in them. And I know from talking to various people that they're talking about how they had to basically go in and turn all these safeguards on, and they explained to me, it's been quite an interesting dance of issues that I'm sure, I don't know exactly what they are, but they said a whole slew of issues, all of them. They said that they started turning the switches on, it would cause other things, you know, alarms that go off and whatnot. But most of our sources are government officials, or previous government officials.
Thank you. Any questions?
Not necessarily questions, just, one of the things that I found appalling in the previous administration was that the service director that you mentioned had keys to the auditor's office, had access to the office without anyone from the auditor's office present. I highly encourage the previous administration to have a process in place, I'm big on processes, for anyone that's been around for any time, but I don't know that a process was ever created to allow entry by outside departments into the auditor's office after hours, or on weekends, or during emergencies. Can you clarify on that at all?
I've never tried to get in there, so.
Yeah, I could say that.
Do you have a key to the auditor's office?
I don't.
No, not the auditor's office, no, no.
Okay.
The RIT guy, Jacob Olman, is the one that gives permissions to certain individuals.
Yep.
To my knowledge, the only people that have permissions for the auditor's office is in fact the people that work in the auditor's office.
Thank you.
We are now trying to gather donations of $70,000, that's our goal. So this is going to turn into a $90,000 party, is that the goal? That's what's floating around on the internet, I've seen the flyer. So, I, okay, I guess that's not a question. I know that Ms. Cartwright said that information would be coming from her office or leaving, so I'm assuming that's going to come from Ms. Cartwright right now. I'm going to be asking for the information, $90,000 is a lot of money, and I'd like to see where it's going. I've had problems getting information in the past, going through records requests right now, and the last one that I sent Ms. Cartwright took six weeks, so to get answered, I have the documentation, is why I'd be glad to send it to you. I sent it to my attorney today, as a matter of fact. So I would like this not to take six weeks to get this information, because I want to see if donors are getting this money. So if we could, I don't know, if we could talk about records requests among the departments, that would be great. I thought maybe we could put a shirt on. I see all these town, these flowers downtown, and they're absolutely beautiful, but they also look incredibly expensive. So I was wondering if downtown Marion was doing that, or if we were doing that.
Can you speak to that at all, Service Director?
Well, it technically falls under our, I believe it's, certain pieces are ours.
I know that the Dr. Flowerbed, I mean, we have like the giant thing with the Birds of Paradise and all the impatience, and the Birds of Paradise are very expensive, I don't know if you guys know that or not, but probably a hundred bucks.
I want to say we have a $4,000 budget for flowers, it's the year-to-year type thing, and that was done by, that's done by Tom Trout, our custodian.
So he planted all the flowers?
He did. He also takes care of water.
He, by his calling, is a landscape designer. Okay. So, obviously, if we purchased them from somewhere, I'd be able to get that information from the auditor's office.
I believe he, yeah, you could, but if my recollection served me correctly, I think it was Marion Flower Shop.
Okay. Sounds like that is a deal. Okay. Because those Birds of Paradise are really a hundred dollars a piece, so I was pretty impressed when I saw them. Then I have, the final question I would have is, has action been taken to remove the auditor from her position? Because as the residents of the city of Marion, I feel we have a right to know if action's been taken against our auditor to have a removal.
Not by me.
I know, I spoke with you, Mr. Russell, and you said you didn't do anything.
So let me provide some information. So recently, what may have been rumors have continued to be talked about, and it was actually a program that, the topic was, has the mayor and the law director filed a complaint to remove Auditor McGinnis?
Right.
That's not true.
Okay.
It's not taking place.
Okay.
But many of you will recall, it's probably been four weeks ago, there was a discussion regarding the auditor's office, and a member of council, during the council meeting, at the end said, there's nothing that we as a council can do, and I stood up and again reminded the council that there are actions that can be taken under the Ohio Vice Code, there's different vehicles or code sections that would enable someone that believes it's necessary to act because whether the auditor has violated the law, or the auditor has failed to complete a duty required by law. In 2023 in December, this council passed an ordinance of no confidence. At that time, many council members had asked me to begin the process of composing an affidavit.
Is that what you sent me today?
Yes.
Okay.
So in December 2023, went on the internet, found this affidavit that's available to anyone, you have to go through the auditor's office, and they have a section for the Fiscal Officer, Fiscal Integrity Act. And so in December 23, I pulled that down, and then when the comments were shared approximately four weeks ago, I pulled that affidavit out, and actually just began to ask one of the first questions that was being asked in December, because at the time, it appeared the auditor hadn't completed continuing education coursework. So, and I know, I had recalled that work had been done on that subject matter. Well, that, asking that question prompted the rumor to grow as if a complaint had been filed. No complaint's been filed, but an affidavit, and actually I have a copy of the affidavit, I can share it with council members that desire to have it, but it's about that affidavit, which actually has to be executed by a council person. So the mayor's without authority to complete this affidavit.
Mm-hmm.
It's specifically for a council person to complete.
But it takes three signatures, is that correct?
Okay.
Is that a different process?
That's a different process. The three signatures, or three electors from the city can initiate a removal process through the probate court. So that's actually another vehicle, venue, that's the probate process. But this particular process is an.
Auditor's thing.
Auditor's thing.
Okay.
And if they make a finding for cause, then they refer it to the Attorney General, and it's, this is all found under the Fiscal Officer Integrity Act, so it's a good source. So the mayor.
Can we put a rumor to rest?
Yes. Thank you for your help in putting this rumor to rest.
Thank you.
Back to the question of the strongest towns, the $90,000 figure is the first I've heard, is that what we're spending on that?
Absolutely not. It is, if you technically look up all the donors, which we do have a Strongest Town Committees Group, we're all working really fast and really hard to get these things done. The person that is in charge of, one of the people that involved in fundraising suggested tiers, and that's how that number came about, we certainly are not going to hit anywhere close to that number.
I mean, the city donated $10,000, the county donated $10,000, that's all.
That's enough to cover the food.
And everything else is going to be covered by outside contributions?
Exactly.
Okay. So I don't care if it costs $90,000, it costs us 10.
Worst-case scenario, if we don't have the money to do every single thing that we wanted to do, then we just won't have it. The city's not spending any more money than it already has.
Any more questions on that? And then, where are we at with the bonds? Have all the bonds been signed, the new bonds, whatever? Where are we at? Can somebody answer that question, where are we at on the bonds?
So, the ordinance that was passed for the new threshold or whatever for the bonds was due July 1st, I believe. Everybody that was 250 and under, including myself, has been signed and returned to the bond company. Treasurer Reese and Auditor McGinnis have filled out their applications and submitted those, so I'm waiting to hear back from the insurance company for that, but that's the status of that right now.
Thank you. You have any questions? Okay, any other matters not on the agenda?
Cassidy Yarner, 754 East Church Street. I'm back again about my trees in my front yard. A lot of people come down, a lot of people took pictures, nobody would stop and talk to me, but one person did. So I have no idea what's going on yet about the trees. The people that's working on the sidewalk down there went across the street and was taking pictures of the trees, and I said, no, you take pictures of there and you're not going to be able to see where the tree's dead. Come over here, you look up, you can tell the tree's dead, I've got pictures here on my phone. He said, no, he said, you need to go back to city council again. I said, I will. So I'm back. I don't know if anybody in here's had any.
Perhaps on vacation.
Did you have to do that one? That was that one? The one you're talking about?
He works, he's the main man over the construction.
For the construction project?
Yeah.
Okay. Safety Director Cal and I've had a couple conversations about your trees and him meeting with the Aqua, and some discussion between them back and forth of whether what Aqua did is going to kill your trees, or whether there's any risk of falling, and he was going more work on that, but he's on vacation this week. So as soon as he gets back, we'll see where he's at with that, and get back in touch with you down there.
Okay, well, there's the trees. That tree is falling, and when it does, if it would happen to go out on Church Street, Church Street's a very busy street, someone's going to get hurt.
If you're referring to the tree on the right, the way it's leaning, it's going to fall, as I think you said last week, to your neighbor's house.
Yeah.
The tree on the left is definitely dead.
Yes.
Whether or not that was caused from the sidewalk or not, but it's very clearly dead if you stand underneath it and look up.
Yeah. Did you come down and look at it?
We came down immediately after the meeting, was that two weeks ago, or?
A week ago.
Week ago.
But yeah, I've got pictures of the tree, and so does this gentleman here, of the trees, and they was not dead before they started working on it, and they are clearly dead now. Well, the one is definitely dead.
I'll see where he's at, when he's back, and we'll come back down and try to take it down.
Okay, I sure appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Are there any other questions, matters not on the agenda? I'm giving you time this time. Do you have any questions?
Yep.
Sam Dern, 734.
Do you want them? Thank you.
I think I'm going to.
Just leave me here?
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Good evening, everybody, the time is 7:36, and we're going to call this Municipal Services Meeting to Order. Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Mr. Teesmith?
Here.
Mr. Barr?
Present.
Ms. Lang?
Here.
All right, we got some summary proceedings, has the committee had a chance to read over those?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, clerk, please take a roll.
Mr. Teesmith?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mrs. Lang?
Yes.
All right, we got one order of new business. Clerk, would you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance to amend, ordinance number 2025-046.
Okay, we have already seen this once before, it's back to us because when we amended it before, we amended it to the wrong pay grade. So it came to us originally as 28E, we moved it to 30E, and it was supposed to have been changed to 31E. So, is there any questions from the committee regarding this? And do we have any explanation from administration as to how that happened?
So, I just clicked through on the agenda tonight, the version that I clicked through, it may not be what you have in front of you, is the one that is before you, does it say "and declaring an emergency"?
No.
Okay. So there was a version that came through on one of last emails, because this has been a team effort with Matt Ice and Tacy, and as you noted already, the number just didn't, as it was being updated, it didn't make it to paper, and it is supposed to be 31E. But important is, the administration would ask that you include an emergency provision, so, because as this was passed a month ago, just had the wrong number in it, we want to get it corrected and allow this employee, a valued employee, to receive the benefit that was intended at the time the ordinance was passed a month ago.
For sure. So do we need to amend this to add the emergency clause to us?
Yes.
I think you have a question here.
Please, go ahead.
Baron Rollins, 881 East Church, Council of March. Have we already given this gentleman the pay raise, and we had the conversation with him?
It's already in there, because we found it as we were working on that.
And is his pay, was he given the correct pay raise?
He was. He was given the correct pay raise. When I was reviewing that one in that, that's when I saw it, and I wanted to get that corrected.
Really like an infamous typo?
It really is.
And I said, well, just fix it, like you can't do that. I said, okay, make it to council and do it.
We just want to make sure that it's corrected.
It's clerical and payroll, or you guys caught it, and we need to come back and do it right.
Take care.
I'll make a motion to amend to add an emergency.
Second.
Clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Teesmith?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
And I'll make a motion to send on to council the recommendation to approve.
I'll second.
Please take a roll.
Mr. Teesmith?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Okay, no other business, matters not on the agenda. Anybody from the committee have anything?
Oh, I did have.
Go right ahead.
I just wanted to follow up, as I was reading through the minutes on.
I just wanted to follow up, as I was reading through the minutes, on any other part, the trashcans, I believe Mr. Rollins asked about it last time, about trashcans at the parks, if anything was done about that, or if we, I'm sure we reached out to.
Yep, the, the, the Parks Department, um, I believe they've been additional trashcan or two out there, I believe there's seven out at Garfield now. We also, for the future, um, when we revisit this, we can get new quotes, and we found some cheaper options that, in the future, when we have the budget for that. If Aaron and I go out, or anybody else for that matter, if it's necessary, we're gonna prepare for that, so.
Okay, good. And, um, the park, Rotary Park, I think you guys said that was next on the list to be taken care of.
We did, we're, I'm, I'm working through that right now with Tacy, who spoke a few days ago, um, about that.
Yeah, it's part of the 26th budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, we have 365 Southern Street, is Red Creek Park Glenwood, you have Glenwood School?
Yeah.
Okay, right. Okay, trashcans, Garfield has seven, Roosevelt and Waldorf have zero, so maybe we could get one for Roosevelt and Waldorf?
We look into that, uh, certainly, thank you. Any other matters? 741, we're adjourned.
What was that? What was the second part she said, Roosevelt and Waldorf? What the hell's that?